Evening and welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board meeting of February 11, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media and also GoToMeet. I'd ask everyone to please silence all their electronic devices at this time. The format for tonight's hearings, all parties wishing to offer comments and testify on matters before the board, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. The applicant or the representative will address the board first and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the boards may ask questions during that presentation or after the applicant's presentation. Following any questions or comments from the board, we'll open it up to the public. And again, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. All comments or questions, the applicant will go through the chair. Following all of the public testimony, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make a final statement and address any concerns. And then at that point, the board will consider closing the public hearing and moving to vote or continuing the public hearing to another date. Okay, with that being said, the first matter before us is 62 Winter Street, single-family addition. I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on February 11, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of William Nyman, case 25-4, with respect to property located at 62 Winter Street, Norwood, Mass., in the single-residence zoning district. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood 02062, and also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning by law section 5.4.4 to construct an addition by closing in an existing side porch and adding a porch to the front of the house. The structure is currently non-conforming and side setback being five feet from the side lot line, and the addition would continue the non-conformity. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning by law shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bill, if you can approach the podium and just give us what you want to do there.
Yeah, Bill Norman, 62 Winter Street. Like you said, in the application, it's an existing, it's currently a non-conforming lot, and we did some research when we first bought the house 20 years ago. I guess 62 Winter Street was the first house built on Winter Street, and thus the front entrance is on the side of the right side of the house, so it basically faces the neighbor's house. So what we want to do, there's an existing porch there, we want to close that porch in and make almost like a mudroom. And then of the door, you guys should have some plans, guys and ladies, the entrance will be facing Winter Street, and then it's an eight-foot front porch like to the front of the property. So, any questions?
Any questions for members of the board?
I had a couple.
Yep, go ahead, Rachel.
It sounds like it's exactly the same footprint. It's just, you know, putting walls up. It just wasn't clear to me because the plan says demo existing porch. Are you really knocking it down and putting in a new one on the same footprint?
Yeah, yeah, basically, what's if you, I think I sent a picture of the front of the house when I applied, attached it, so I don't know if you got the, that existing like front porch, yes, will be taken off and then basically reframed and closed in. So it's not getting any bigger, like not going any closer to, but we are taking that down and then kind of closing it in.
And then, can you explain, in that new area that you're enclosing, the windows, I think there's already a window to like the left of where the porch is. Are there new windows going in on that first floor where that?
On this, yeah, on the, it would be the, I guess it would be in the picture, I guess you're referring to the right elevation, right side elevation?
Existing proposed right side elevation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that would, there is currently a window, like it's, yes, it's that side of the house. That's actually my office. That window will be kind of, now will be inside, but that window will be blocked off from the inside, and those windows will be on the outside of the house.
Okay, so there's basically one there now, it's going to be covered, and then there'll be those kind of two, two sets of two right next to each other?
Yeah.
And then the other question is, the vegetation, there's, that's in between your house and your neighbor's house, that's on, it must be on the neighbor's property because you only have five feet there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they have, I think it's a, like a cherry, like a cherry tree or a Japanese maple in that, that's their property.
Okay, thank you. No other questions for me.
Okay, Matt, you all set?
I'm all set.
Al, do you have anything?
Did I read that correctly, it says eight bedrooms?
There is.
It's about time you put a mudroom in.
Yeah, it's, that was 20 years old, so you can imagine the bedrooms are all, they're not very big, and it drives my wife crazy because the closets are always, they're all like, you know, this deep, because back then they had a suit for church and a pair of overalls when they built the house, and with three daughters living in that house and a son, there's no closet space, so.
You don't need two bathrooms.
Well, there's two full and two half, but it's still not enough.
But a beautiful kitchen.
Yeah, that is true.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bill. Is there anyone here to speak on this proposal before us? Anyone here to speak on this proposal? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting that would like to speak on this proposal at 62 Winter Street? By seeing no one and hearing from no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Made by Shannon and seconded by Matt. Matt, on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Al, closing the public hearing? The public hearing is closed. What is the wishes of the board?
Yeah, I mean, it's not really increasing the footprint of the home at all. It's also one of the only homes on the street that doesn't seem to have a front-facing front door, so I don't think that aesthetically, actually aesthetically, it will maybe blend into the street even more so than it does today. So I don't see any negative impacts to the street from the addition as proposed in the application.
Yeah, and obviously, there's no environmental impacts and no utilities are already there. The circulation won't change. Shannon talked upon the visual and lineaus compatibility, and there is a slight fiscal impact. The town will receive a few more dollars and certainly meets the needs of the family. I don't know if anyone has anything else to add?
No.
Al, anything? Okay, we'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Al, seconded by Matt. Matt on the motion to approve as presented?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Good luck, Bill.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Is Mr. Hearn on Zoom? Mr. Hearn on Zoom?
See attorney Hearn on Zoom.
No? Okay. Okay, the next matter before us will be seven, excuse me, the solar PV at the landfill, use of a special permit. I will read the public hearing on this. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on February 11, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Tom Hammond, case 25-3, with respect to the property located at the Norwood Landfill, Norwood, Mass., 02062, in the single-residence S2 zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning by law table of use section 3.1.5b8 to allow an essential services use in the S2 district. The project proposes to construct a solar power generation array on the closed and capped Norwood landfill. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning by law shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Yes, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Brendan Realy from Atlantic Design Engineers. I also have my colleague, Asa Smith, with me, and we're representing the applicant, TES Winter Street Solar, 23 LLC.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. As indicated, the proposed project will be a solar photovoltaic facility at the zero Winter Street property, which is composed of four parcels, which are approximately 39.3 acres. As indicated within the introduction, the purpose of this special permit is because the property is located in the single-residence District 2, and our project qualifies as essential services, which in this district requires special permits in accordance with use table 3.1.5b8. A little history on the property, the subject parcels are owned by the town of Norwood, and it's the location of the Winter Street landfill, which was in operation from approximately 1945 till 1998, excuse me. An administrative consent order was issued in 1998, and the landfill was capped in December of 1999. CDM Smith has done ongoing maintenance and monitoring of the landfill since its closure. Per GIS, the site is not within any DEP map surface or groundwater protection areas or town designated water resource districts. It's not within estimated habitat of rare wildlife or priority habitat of rare species, and is not within an area of critical environmental concern. A portion of the site is located within a FEMA AE flood zone. Existing conditions at the subject properties includes the cleared landfill cap, existing stormwater facilities, and the town Norwood compost facility. Abiding properties include woodlands and wetlands to the north, residential properties to the east and west, and the Highland Cemetery to the south. The existing wetlands were delineated by Environmental Consulting and Restoration LLC in May of last year. The proposed conditions are obviously the solar photovoltaic facility, which the fenced-in area will be approximately 9.93 acres, and the entire array will be located on the previously assigned solid waste area of the landfill. Additionally, the solar array is going to be constructed on ground ballasted racking system, which, if you're not familiar with that, is essentially a concrete block, so there's no penetration of the ground as part of constructing the racking. It also consists of a security fence and above-ground electrical cable also on the ballasted system, and it will include equipment pads, gravel access road, riser poles, and overhead wires. The utility poles will not be installed on the cap portion of the landfill. The proposed project is utilizing the existing stormwater facilities at the, that were constructed as part of the closure of the landfill, and these include swales and detention basins, which will vent direct discharge untreated stormwater to the adjacent wetland areas. No tree clearing or grading is proposed as part of the proposed development, and all existing landfill vents will remain in place. The proposed project, though located within a residentially zoned district, will be built on land otherwise not available for residential development. Daily traffic to the solar project will be limited to the construction period and currently will not increase the average daily and peak hour traffic. The project will provide clean energy to the electrical grid by interconnecting via existing overhead wires located to the north of the landfill and will not require any other utilities or public services. Though portions of the project are proposed within the wetland buffer zones, this work will only occur in previously disturbed areas. The project will not require additional clearing or impacts to the adjacent wetlands. And as mentioned, stormwater runoff will be captured by the existing stormwater system. Additionally, the closest residential building is over 420 feet away and is separated by woodland. Any questions or concerns I can try to address?
Yeah, okay. Just a note to the board, there was a memo from Murphy Hesse, Tony Lahand regarding some guidelines for us, and I think I might have a chance to review it.
I am not too excited to see those questions.
Yeah, the question was put forth from our planning department to the legal department regarding large-scale solar, and the question was, can we deny this? Is that correct, Alex, was the question?
Yeah, and on what grounds?
Yeah.
If the answer were to be yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it does not have the authority to deny the project solely based on special permit criteria. Municipalities cannot unreasonably regulate or prohibit solar energy system unless the restrictions are necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare. We have discretion to impose reasonable regulations in the size, placement, and design of such projects, but any outright prohibition or excessive restrictions might be justified by a legitimate welfare, public welfare concern. A denial based solely on aesthetic considerations, community opposition, or broad zoning objectives that do directly relate to health, safety, or welfare would likely be overturned by the court. And then he cites some cases, so, I don't know, I'd care to see it is if anyone wants to look at that. Just wanted to get that into the record. Okay, Al, I'll start with you. Any questions for the applicant?
Any revenue generated from the source cost to who?
They're not selling it back to the town, right? You're selling it into the grid, but will get lease payments?
I believe that's how it's working. I know that Tom Hammond is virtually attending the meeting. He's a representative for the applicant. He probably could address.
Yep, Mr. Hammond, thank you. If you can state your name and address for the record, and the question?
Yeah, Tom Hammond, 37th and Scottsdale Circle, meeting Pennsylvania.
Okay, now, a question from the memo.
Yeah, this contract is a PPA power purchase agreement with the Norwood, you know, the light department. So the light department is buying the energy that's produced from the solar, and it's in entirety.
Okay, great. And that will help with our clean energy solar percentage?
Correct, yeah, it will help with their clean goals, I believe it's about 3%. Can produce annually about 3% of the power of Norwood's distribution.
Right, so that's good, okay.
At what cost?
Not sure if that's available to us, but, Mr. Hammond, can you answer that question of what cost the contract is for? I'm not sure if that's in our purview, though, Al.
Yeah, there's a negotiated fixed rate between us and the light department. I don't have contractual structure in front of me.
And?
Yeah, it's a rate negotiated with the light department directly.
Yeah, and you've already signed that contract, correct?
Correct, yeah, this was an RFP issued by the light department that we won a couple of years ago.
Okay, very good, so it was an RFP, yeah. And I take it you were the highest bidder?
Yeah, I think there was a number of reasons why they elected to go with us, but yeah, it was a couple of years ago, actually, pre-COVID, and then this project was delayed in COVID and been ongoing, but the contract is signed, and now, whatsoever, before you hear, trying to get through permitting before construction.
Okay. Move me also? No?
I'm good.
Okay. Shannon?
Really bad.
What's that? Sorry, Al, you good?
I've had enough.
Shannon?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So for the construction period and impacts, I guess, how long are you anticipating it would take to construct the site? And can you just sort of walk us through access to the site and the types of vehicles that would be coming in and out?
Sure, yeah. So, Tom, if you, if you want to go?
Yeah, go ahead, I can stop at a few.
Okay, yeah, so typically, a project like this is somewhere in the six to eight-month period. As part of the closure for the landfill, there is a post-closure document that essentially tells you what you can and cannot do on a site to help prevent disturbing the cap, you know, the protective cap of the landfill. So that will come into play as far as what equipment can be used. There's geotechnical that has been done as well to help determine different weights that the cap can handle, and that will play into the equipment that will be used. But essentially, the process is that, especially since there's no clearing that has to be done, no grading that has to be done in this situation, the racking is installed again on ballasted systems, so there's no penetration of the cap or, you know, disturbance of the soil. And the racking would be installed, they would install the concrete pad for the equipment and then install the panels and do all the wiring. And some, some portion of that, at the beginning, it would be erosion control would also be put in place before they started doing any of that, and a security fence would be put up again on a ballasted system, so no impact to the cap itself.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I, I know that this is used currently for just, you know, general walking and community recreation, but I assume that that, I assume that the site will now be limited to just like the solar array. There will not be like public access?
Correct.
On or through the site?
There is a, an email, I believe, or no, a memorandum from the Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works and Town Engineering, addressing that, and I believe his recommendation was to put up no trespassing signs and to basically limit people from accessing it.
Okay, great, nothing else right now?
Thank you. Rachel?
We got a new sheet eight. Can you just walk through what the differences are between what was in our packet?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you look at the packet, you can turn to sheet eight or any of the sheets that show the proposed. If you look to the south of the array, you may see a bump out, kind of a rectangle.
Yeah.
That has been removed, and if you can tell on that sheet, there is a thin line that's connecting to the property corner to the right. That is actually, you know, designating a property boundary there that we found out that they do not have as part of their lease agreement to build on. So that was removed to stay, obviously, inside the property boundary that we have access to.
Okay, so, so it sounds like the power purchase agreement and also the lease have been executed with the relevant town authorities?
That would be a good question for Tom again.
Yeah, that is correct. Both the power purchase agreement and the lease are executed.
Okay, can you just walk me through, because obviously, I mean, there's very little that you can put this property for use, and solar panels being one of them, I saw in the materials, MASTEP kind of signed off as far as the environmental concerns being on the former landfill. But, you know, we've heard about concerns about not disturbing the cap, and you're doing all of your specifications around that, but what, what do those documents cover in the event that either there's, you know, undiligenced issues that arise because of the condition of the cap or what's underneath or the construction over it? Who has liability in those documents? And who, like, what's the insurance coverage for that, just because it is on town property?
Yeah, sure, and I don't believe it's funny, but there's an entire indemnification section in the, in the lease that highlights who's responsible for different scenarios. So any damage or harm potentially caused by the construction of the solar array, you know, the leasing, meaning the applicant, us, is identifying the town of that liability. You know, I just want to state, I'm not a lawyer, so we can provide this doc and provide a little more clarity, but there's an entire indemnification section, and that was really a range of written from the town that we've agreed to. There's also obviously DEP rules that we have to follow, and there'll be EEP inspections throughout construction to make sure that the facility is being constructed to their requirements as a part of the post-closure use permit from the DEP.
Okay, and are there any existing condition provisions in that indemnification language that would put liability on the town? Because obviously, everyone knows that it's a former dump that's been capped. As part of your diligence, have you assumed that? Or would that be retained with the town with respect to issues relating to existing conditions?
We don't want to misspeak, and we can maybe provide the lease and get some further clarity, but the majority of the indemnification related to handling with the solar is being assumed by us. Now, the bounds of our assumption of that indemnification is limited to the scope of the project and the construction and what's within, let's say, the fenced-in area, and then a little bit in the north there. So obviously, some of this cap extends outside of that, so there could be issues related to that. That jurisdiction would come into play at that point. Again, I don't want to misspeak, we could, you know, potentially provide the lease, have to get guidance from the town, but Tony Mazuko is involved in that, so we could probably pull up that entire language or even provide the lease, I guess as a supplement.
Thank you. And then, just, I think, was it a 25-year lease? What happens, whenever the term ends, what happens? Do you deconstruct and restore? Is that how that works?
Yeah, there's a couple of, go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so the light department either has the option to purchase and own the asset at that point, or if not, then yes, it would be deconstructed and restored to the original condition.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, you mentioned that it's capped, is it lined also?
Um.
Which is another layer of?
Right. I, I am not sure. Tom, I'm not sure if you're aware of the filed construction of it.
My belief is that it's not lined.
It's not lined. Are there any methane issues up there? Do we know where?
There's vents for it, and part of CDM Smith's ongoing monitoring and maintenance has been to check those levels.
So they monitor them regularly?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but there's no, so there's no corrective action from DEP at this point?
No.
Okay. Are you planning to bring any new fill-in to, to raise or level?
At this time, no, there's no grading involved, and we're not filling in anywhere. The only thing that, the only thing that may change that and be very, very minor is if we have to make any adjustments to the stormwater, and at this time, we're not planning on doing that.
But we could make that as a proviso, Michael, right?
Yeah, we can make it as a condition if you like, yeah.
Yeah. And then what's the, what's the life of the panels?
20 years is typical.
Okay, yeah, because I know the technology's changing so quickly these days.
Yeah, it really depends on the panel, but yeah, around 20 years.
Is there an opportunity that you might change sooner and have to come back? Because if, you know, that's going to disrupt, obviously, the traffic and everything.
What, sorry, what do you mean by change sooner?
Change the panels out sooner if the technology gets that good.
Oh, I, that's not typically how the projects are run. I guess there's always possibly a chance, but it's not typical, no.
Yeah, okay. And just curious, what, what size solar field do you need to actually make it financially?
To be financial, well, I mean, that's really internal financial model, you know, companies are all different. I've worked with companies that wouldn't do anything, you know, it had to be right at the max of 4.99 megawatts AC, and that was it. They wouldn't do anything smaller. So it really is an internal financial model, depending on the company.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. And then with respect to the panels once they're installed, do you have somebody there permanently monitoring them? How does that, how does the monitoring work? And if something happens?
Sure.
Who's responsible and how does it, how does it get fixed?
There's a continuous monitoring system there that will communicate with the, the company that's running, that's operating the facility. So if there's anything that goes wrong with it, that something stops working, they get a message. In addition to that, there is a security camera as well, so if they need to tap in and see what's going on, they have that ability as well. And then there's general ongoing maintenance throughout the year. So just, you know, even if it's just going and mowing, or they'll have occasionally people come out and check on the system, make sure everything is working as it should.
Okay. I'm good, Michael.
You don't use goats?
Not that I know of, but that's a good idea.
Some of them use goats, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Fence height?
Seven feet, and there's going to be a gap for wildlife.
Okay. What is the total megawatts of this site?
Good question. Tom, do you know off the top of your head? Tom, do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, this is a 3.3-megawatt DC system.
Okay. So the contract's for 25 years. Does the contract kick in once it's up for operation?
Yeah, so basically, once the system's built and we get through the required testing with the light department, then they provide us permission to energize, and then that's when the term of the contract begins.
Okay, so the contract's 25 years, the panel's life's 20. When you say the panel life's 20, does that mean it decreases significantly from...
Yeah, and I would amend that. The panels all today are warranted for 25 years.
Okay.
As a minimum. Some of them 30 and beyond. But the panels that we'll be purchasing are warranted for the full duration of the PPA, the full 25 years.
Okay. Where, at the 25 years, percentage-wise, putting out the power, what does it drop to?
So there, the annual degradation is about half a percent a year. And that's modeled in the production as well. So I think it takes you down to something end of life.
All right, thank you. Anything else, sir?
No.
Tom, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we open this up to the public?
All right, enough, all for me.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on this matter? Please address the board. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you, everyone. My name is Tony Esco, District 5. Live on Endicott Street. I'm a little disappointed that the town engineer or members of the light department are actually not here, and I have a lot of questions. First, is the Norwood Municipal Light Department the only company that will purchase this electricity? Are these renewable energy credits that can be purchased by other companies as well? Or is this a specific tie-in to Norwood? My second question is, the Board of Selectmen, are the Norwood Light Commissioners, and are they aware of this contractual agreement and of this plan? I may have missed it, but I don't remember coming before the Board of Selectmen. And an array of solar panels has been in the discussion phase for many, many years in Norwood. And prior to COVID, and I forget whether it was through a hazard mitigation plan or vulnerability preparedness plan, the previous town planner had initially had applied for a grant where they had hoped to tie in a solar array there and store the energy and possibly tie it as a backup for emergency power for the senior center. Unfortunately, and perhaps Elex Jones has some reference to that, unfortunately, for whatever reason, be it lack of funds or whatever, it was denied. But it was actually in one of our plans. It was either, I cannot, I didn't have the time to look it up before it came, but it was either the hazard mitigation or the vulnerability plan, and then you can apply for grants, you know, when you have a certified plan. And I do know that at one time, that was considered an excellent project for preparedness, so that Norwood would have that available for the senior center. My second question, my fourth question is, did the Norwood Light Department seek this out? Was this something they wanted to seek? Before, when I had heard about plans for capping a solar array on the Norwood fill, Norwood was really initiating it. And I thought the Norwood Light Department was more, had more of a vested interest. So I want to know if the municipal light department will be able to get multi-year contracts? Will this be one of their multi-year, long-term contracts along with other contracts that they have for renewable energy in their portfolio? Or, like I say, this is a private company. Will other companies be able to purchase from them, or is this solely for Norwood? Another concern of mine is, I saw it in the paper, I hope the abuddies saw it in the paper, but it's going to have a different look and feel. And I know the Trails Committee also, in the past, it hasn't come to fruition yet, but way back, one of the ideas was an overlook. Because you're talking about the highest elevation in, one of the highest elevation areas of Norwood with a beautiful view. And I'm not sure if I am personally ready to jump on this without having input from all these other possibilities for the area. My other concern is, when you have this array out there, I'm still concerned, I didn't hear enough specificity, about the rainfall falling down over them and the flow of water. Again, you're at the highest point in Norwood for flow of water, and will the water flow faster? So those are just some of my concerns. Number one is the Board of, does the Board of Selectmen have any input on this? And out of courtesy as Norwood Light Commissioners, have they been abreast of this?
All right, I'll start answering your questions. But first, I'll just ask Tom to answer the first question. Tom, this is all going to be, I think the question was, is this being sold off to anybody outside of the town of Norwood? And I believe you answered that, that it's not, that all of the energy will be sold back to the Norwood Light Department. Is that correct?
That's correct. Everything's sold back to the Norwood Light Department, and the Norwood Light Department is retaining all of the solar renewable energy credits produced from this project as well.
Okay. So the other question is, Jimmy Collins, when he was with the light department, put out an RFP at the request of the light commissioners who are the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
This group won the RFP, and a Board of Selectmen approved and signed a contract
Great.
With this company. So obviously, by signing that contract...
Yes.
They are aware of this.
Okay.
And in regards to the Trails Commission, Committee, Overlook, there's a contract for this solar array. So there would be legal repercussions if we went backwards and built some kind of overlook, which I don't think's recommended by MAST DEP, because it is a site that, at one time, it still does, puts off methadone.
Okay.
That's why the things are there. So in the light department, I did speak with Mr. Shaughnessy. He had another conflict this evening.
Okay.
So did I answer all the questions that you asked?
Very well, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I can add insight, if I may, through, about the idea of the viewing platform. So that was an idea for CPA-funded project that the Trails Committee had, and they did, so they went to the landowner, the Board of Selectmen, to ask for permission to sign off on this project, and the Board of Selectmen declined to do so because they knew that this contract was coming, and also because of the concerns about the safety and stability of the cap and the technical expertise it takes to build there.
Thank you. And I just want to touch one more thing. We got in the rain runoff of the panels. That is being addressed by the Conservation Commission, correct? They have not signed off on the shed.
Correct, so they continued...
And DEP won't sign off on it either, without...
It is the highest elevation, so what is a concern?
Okay, no, so it is going to be looked at. That's not the purview of us.
Yes, I understand.
So we'll leave it at that.
But thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else here like to speak on this matter? Please approach your name. If you cannot approach, you can speak from there, sir.
Yeah, Steve Esco, 14 Endicott Street, Norwood Town Meeting Member, District 5. Just a couple of questions. First off, I was one of the origin of the company where they started, and the oversight of the company that will be reviewing the project as it's established. And a couple of other questions was, the work for this, when do they think that they'll be starting construction? Do they work just Monday to Friday? Will the town site be open on the weekends during the project construction?
Okay. Thank you. Tom, did you hear all those questions, and can you address those?
I did, yes. So my company, Tangent Energy Solutions, won this project. We are headquartered out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Although, we're actually a wholly owned subsidiary of Caterpillar. So we're part of Caterpillar Corporation at large. We've done business in New England for the last 20 years with a number of municipalities, electrical power projects, solar, natural gas generation, energy storage projects. So very familiar with the area. We'll be using all local licensed labor, starting from engineers all the way through every contractor to build the array. So that'll address that question. I'm sorry, what was the second half of the question?
The, who's going to be supervising the work, and then who oversees it once it's completed? And the third question was, and I think the answer will be no during construction. There won't be, I'm hoping there'll be a fence, there won't be anybody allowed up there.
And the construction schedule.
And the construction schedule.
Sure. So the site will be built to specifications of all local code enforcement, and local code enforcement will be doing, conducting inspections. So that includes anyone who has jurisdiction, which would be MAST DEP, Electrical Inspection, Building Commissioner. You know, we'll be building to the plans, and that will be the oversight. Obviously, all of our plans are engineered by Massachusetts licensed engineers. So that's where the specifications will be coming from. The anticipated construction schedule is likely June through November, right now, assuming we can get through permitting in the next month or so. And as for access, yeah, we will have temporary fencing during construction to gate off the areas that the array is being worked on. We will be working with Mark Ryan and the town to work around public access hours. I know there's public access needed at certain times of the year, so we will make sure to not interrupt those operations. Standard constructions would be five days a week. Sometimes, in the summer, we may take advantage of weekends if it's not disruptive, just with longer day hours. But again, we'll be working around the public access.
Does that answer all your questions, Mr. Esco? Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to add to this? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting or Google Meet that would like to address the board on this matter? Okay, seeing none and hearing from no one else. What are the wishes of the board? I'm prepared to close the public hearing. I don't know what the wishes of the board are, though.
A move to close the public hearing?
A motion by Shannon to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Matt. Matt, unclosing the public hearing?
Yes.
Rachel, unclosing the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon, unclosing the public hearing?
Yes.
Al, unclosing the public hearing?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? And there's some, there are some conditions that do not, from the conversation, to seem to be overbearing and would fall in line with our direction from the town council. So just make that comment. And I'll ask, what are the wishes of the board?
I would just say, it would have been nice to have that information because it does, that I had asked about on the contract itself, because that goes to the benefit of the town. I also don't know that the specific details are really in our purview for use. But, you know, it was, it would have been negotiated with the assistance of town council, so I would have to assume that all of those protections are in there. But, you know, I think this is a use for a landfill, and the town had reached out for this. So I think it aligns with, like, town objectives.
I agree. And the light department does have to reach that clean energy of 3%. But just so that, I want to make this clear, my son does work for the town department as alignment, but he would have no negotiations in this at all. So I just want to make that statement. Anything else, Rachel? I agree with you. Yep. Matt?
No, I think Rachel covered it. I mean, it's a useless plot of land right now that the town has no benefit from, and this will give some benefit to the town. I think we put some conditions on it, but, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the light department, of all, they all think it's what we need. I'm not going to contradict them.
Shannon?
Yeah, and I mean, we don't have a lot of other large parcels of land that are available for this type of use in the town, so I think it is a good way to maximize use on a space that's pretty limited otherwise.
Al?
One last question.
Yep.
How many, does anybody know, how many people sent in RFPs?
I can find out. I know there was at least three from my conversation with Kevin Shaughnessy last week, but I can ask if there was more.
Just curious.
Okay, yeah, I'll follow up with Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay. I agree with everything that's said, and I think it is a good use of land. I'd rather see this than forest being cleared, which you see all over the state for solar arrays. So with that being said, if there's a motion, we'll entertain the motion. If there's any conditions a member wants to put on it, please do so. Matt, I think you had some things.
Yeah, I think one of the conditions I think we put on is if they have to add fill, that they have to come back to us.
Okay. That's very reasonable, yeah. Anything else?
And similarly, if the technology advances that quickly and they want to change within, you know, prior to the 25-year expiration, life expiration, they have to come back to us.
Okay.
And we would approve consistent with the plans presented, so, right? So just generally, any modifications would necessarily require...
Any modifications to them to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any other conditions?
Is the landfill on just one parcel?
No, I think it is on several parcels.
It looked like it was on three, and this area is on two of the three.
So, and then there's a very small parcel to the north. This is the fourth parcel that the pads.
Is the application for each parcel?
But, so here's one parcel, here is one parcel on this side, and then there's a parcel that is not any part being leased.
Well, the application just says the Norwood landfill.
And the other one is right here.
So that would assume all of the parcels.
So this lowest one, which follows the fence, juts up and makes a little triangle here, is not...
Is not involved. Okay. Anything else, Al?
No, I was just trying to avoid any conflicts.
Yeah. I think the generic Norwood landfill, I think, covers it. Certainly, when we write the decision, we probably should add the parcel numbers. I don't think that would be difficult, okay? So the motion is, I understand it from the members, the motion is to approve as presented with the following condition: any additional, any fill that has to be added to construct the solar array, they must return to the zoning board. If there are any changes in the technology regarding the solar panels that they want to change out, or any piece of equipment there, they should return to the zoning board. And if there's any change in the construction documents as presented to the zoning board, they would have to come back for a modification. Did I state that correctly?
Yes. Hearing it, though, I think, I don't want the requirement to come back at the change of technology if they want something subbed out to be an impediment to improvement. So can...
Okay, okay, so they can change. Okay, so that would just, yeah, so that would just come under, if they got a new technology, if they had to change the construction plans, maybe the panel was heavier and they had to put in a, I think they sit on, what do they sit on?
Concrete.
Concrete blocks, or if you had to increase the block. So I guess we can just incorporate that. Any change to the construction plans as presented...
Yeah.
Would come back to us, and we'll take that out, okay?
The only other thing, Michael, is who is negotiating the build-out plan and schedule so that the neighbors are protected? So they're not coming in at 5:00 in the morning or, you know, 11:00, 12:00?
Well, yeah, we can, we can...
There is a town bylaw that says they can't start before 7:00.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's always a condition.
I know, that's not our purview per se, but...
If I may make the suggestion that maybe the, there could be a threshold set for fill, so it's not any fill, but it's like over...
A certain amount?
A certain amount, like half a ton or whatever the board thinks is appropriate, so that it's clear if they're, they have to, you know, put gravel under one of the ballasts. That's not a trigger if they have to put gravel under all of the ballasts.
That's a function of how many truck loads are coming in...
Right.
How many days and for how long.
Right, right.
I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know those numbers.
Probably cubic, as Al said, probably measuring cubic feet.
Yards, yeah, cubic feet, yeah.
I don't want to make this... I don't want to make this more complicated. I, would the board be comfortable if any fills going to be brought in, that they get the approval of the building commissioner? And then if the building commissioners estimate that they need to return to us because of the amount of fill? Because trying to put a number on it can be very difficult.
Yes, that's impossible.
Yeah. Without, yeah.
And then the building inspector feels that they're putting too much fill, in his opinion. I think that might be the solution here.
Gary is with us online.
Okay. Gary, thank you for joining us. This is Gary Pelletier, our building commissioner.
Sure. Any of the, the construction is going to be, you know, under my purview, as well as the enforcement of any, in all conditions, and approval of the board. So to the point made, if they're going to deviate from, we would have a pre-construction meeting before the permit was finalized and work began. So like any of the major projects in town, I keep a very personal and close tie on them, and especially anything that is permitted by either the planning board or the ZBA, monitor and enforce the conditions set forth by the board under the permit.
Okay, so just trying to get the language correct. So any deviation from the approved construction plan, including any additional fill, will be at the discretion of the building inspector, whether or not the applicant has to come back to the ZBA. Is everyone comfortable with that language?
I am.
Gary, are you comfortable with that?
Yep.
Everybody?
They would come to me first.
Yep.
And it's a minor amount of fill or a minor change, just like all the other, like I said, site plan approvals and special permits. If it's a truly minor modification, I would make that call. And if I determine, along with the town planner, that it's not a minor modification, then we would send it back to the board.
What Gary just said, I'm comfortable with.
Yeah.
I think if we just approve, if we all feel that this is the right thing to do and we approve it?
Yeah.
Then I think we just leave it alone.
Yeah, I don't think we could get more specific in terms of an exact threshold of amount of fill today.
Yeah, so, okay. So the motion is to approve as presented by the applicant. Is there a motion? That's the motion, is there?
So moved.
So moved by Matt?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Alan, the motion to approve?
Yes.
Shannon, the motion to approve?
Yes.
Rachel, the motion?
Yes.
Approved?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hammond, for attending.
Thank you.
Okay, the next matter before us is going to be 707 The Ponsett Street. In this matter, I'm going to read into the public record and going to state that we're going to seek a motion to continue. Alec is going to explain the reason why, and then Mr. Hearn would like to make a statement. And then my intention is to continue it until March 4th and not get into any discussion over what went wrong and what should be done. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on February 11, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Norwood Gulf Inc., case 25-2, with respect to the property located at 707 The Ponsett Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the single residence as zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw, section 5.2, to our expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use in the form of an addition to the rear of the existing gasoline station and motor vehicle service facility. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Alec, I'm going, Alex, I'm going to ask you to explain to the members and to the public what happened and why we're continuing this to March 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To give everyone some background, this pertains to abutters lists. And typically, for public hearings, for the planning board and for ZBA, our office, the Community Development Department, makes an abutters list that includes all properties within 300 feet of a property boundary. And then the owners of each of those properties receive a notice advising them of the upcoming hearing. This is pretty typical of how towns notify abutters throughout the Commonwealth, but it is beyond the requirements of Mass General Law, which requires notifying direct abutters who share a property line and abutters to those abutters. So some properties within the 300 feet that we typically notice may be three or four properties away, and that's the difference. So our office learned on Monday morning that the abutters list that we'd created for 707 The Ponsett Street used only one of the four parcels that are part of the premises of the Norwood Gulf as the subject property. And as a result, the abutters within 300 feet that we typically would have notified were not all notified, although the abutters required by the state statute of people directly around the property and people directly around them were all notified by that notice. So it being Monday morning, that was our last opportunity to create a newspaper ad to rectify the notice if the notice needed to be rectified. So that's what we did, and we're working on the new abutters list that would notify everyone who has previously been notified for cases regarding this property within 300 feet of the parcel boundaries. So we did speak with town council about this. Attorney Singer advised us that the zoning board could rely on their rules and regulations, which say that at the board's discretion, in addition to the abutters and abutters to abutters who are noted in Mass General Law, that all additional abutters located within 300 feet of the subject property are considered parties of interest. And Attorney Singer further suggested, since the rules and regs say at the board's discretion, that perhaps the board should take a vote on whether to consider those additional abutters parties of interest to be notified. And the recommendation from myself and my office is to, that we would like to notify the way that we typically do, everyone within 300 feet. And so, and we would have plenty of time to re-notice before the March 4th deadline, which is within the 65 days that the zoning board has to hear the case. So that's my recommendation, and the primary recommendation is for the board to take a vote about whether to endorse that option in the rules and regs to consider everyone within 300 feet a party of interest.
Okay, all right, thank you. I know the public hearing's open. I know, Mr. Hearn, you wanted to make a comment, and then we're going to continue this.
I do, thank you. For the record, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and Carrow, 30 Walpole Street, Norwood. I am the attorney for the applicant in this matter. I learned yesterday about this problem, and I just have a couple of comments on it. Mistakes happen, and all of us make mistakes at different times. I do want to note for the record that the application that we filed listed all four parcels, that are tax parcels shown on the maps of the town, although only one tax bill is issued for this property. And the tax bill and the description of the particular parcel shows the entire property in terms of area. But somewhere along the way, it was missed. I do want to point out that Section 11 of the zoning act defines the parties in interest. That defines parties in interest, not a local regulation. They are abutters, owners of land directly opposite on any public or private street or way, and abutters to the abutters within 300 feet of the property line. So looking at the, when I look at the map that I received from the planning department yesterday of who was given notice, I want to note for the record that everybody required by law to receive notice was included in the mailing. Now, we have had a custom in this town that goes beyond what the state law requires of giving notice to anybody owning property within 300 feet of the site. That's more than what is required. The abutters to abutters means the direct abutter and, and abutter next to the direct abutter, if the second abutter is within, is located within 300 feet of the site. So there was compliance, but I don't want to have any doubt about the matter, and the continuance to March 4th is agreeable. We will request it. I think it is the appropriate way to handle it. I disagreed with the idea of publishing a new notice, and I had asked for a copy of the notice and only got it late today, too late. You usually have till Tuesday noon, actually, to put ads in, and we've done that many times before. But I didn't get it, and I am concerned that the notice as it's being published will create confusion and states that abutters were not notified. That is not correct. All the abutters were notified. Parties in interest are defined in the statute, as I just read it. We have treated as interested parties those who live or own property within 300 feet. So we're going to give notice to them. But new publication was not necessary. If you read the cases on this and read Bobrowski, which is basically the bible on this stuff, the Bobrowski book, you can give special notice. That's authorized under the statute. And by continuing to March 4th, it would be time to give special notice to those people who had been missed. You're continuing this, or you will be continuing this, in a public meeting, in the usual way of a vote, to continue it to a specific date, a time, and location or manner of meeting, which is what's required under the open meeting law. So I don't think you have to send a mailing out to everybody on that list, just the people that were missed. And I disagreed with the idea of publishing it in the newspaper because it was, in my view, unnecessary under the case law, under the statute, and because of the language that says the notice was not received by all abutting property owners. That language is incorrect. So I objected to it. Nobody got back to me when I did raise the question yesterday about it, when there would have been time to deal with it. But we're here today, and, and by the way, I appreciate you putting this at the bottom of the list, because I did get hung up on another matter that I'm going to schedule the same date, but it's, we've got to go forward. But I just want everybody to understand, we're okay, I mean, the law was complied with, actually, but we're okay with doing the extra notice by mail. I think the newspaper notice is, could lead to confusion, and I think it misstates the facts, but it's already in. So can't do anything about it. Just for the next time, maybe if this happens again, maybe we can have a little more discussion and try to put our heads together to come up with a good solution. So I would ask, then, that the matter be continued at the request of the applicant to 7:00 on March 4th, to meet in the usual way, in person here at the Senior Center, and with the option of meeting on Google Meet or whatever it is.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. So the applicant has asked, and I think the town agrees, that we continue this to March 4th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the Norwood Senior Center, and also at GoToMeeting or Google Meet. Is there a, will someone move that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alan, seconded by Shannon. Alan, the motion?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next matter before us is 241 Pleasant Street, variance modification request. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on February 11, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Edward Musto regarding property located at 241 Pleasant Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general residence G zoning district. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a modification to a variance in the zoning bylaw, section 3.1.5.8.3, to change the layout of an approved addition to the existing single-family residence that would convert the structure to a two-family residence that exceeds the maximum allowable floor area. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application to the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If the applicant can approach, state the name and address for the record, and tell us what your request is, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Going through the minutes and stuff, I don't believe I can act on this one.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll be abstaining?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Hi, the evening, Mr. Board. My name is Edward Musto. I'm the owner of 241 Pleasant Street. I live at 36 Blue Hill Drive in Westwood. Upon the two-month extension the board gave me back, I think it was in October, November, December, one of the conditions was two months to get the building permit application filed with the building department, which I did. And the zoning enforcement officer's review of the permit and application, he requested that I meet with the sewer commission for the purpose of the placement of the building in relationship to the sewer line that runs through the property. I did speak with Jay Fucci, the sewer superintendent, and it was his preference that if I could move the building, we showed the building being five feet from the existing sewer line. He asked if we could move the building 10 feet from the existing sewer line. And I, in the spirit of cooperation, said, "Sure, we can do that." So we redrew the plan, and it was the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer that that would change the plan and that I would have to come back before the zoning board for a minor modification of the placement of the addition in relationship to the sewer line. So that's why I'm here.
Before I entertain any questions from the board, I'll ask the building commissioner, he has provided us with a, provided us with a letter, but Gary, if you can recap your letter and the circumstances around this request?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So the, and I'm not sure if you have the previously approved plan at your disposal, if the board members have that. Alex may be able to provide it for you. But the approved, the approved plan, the variance that was, that was approved prior, that was then extended, had the addition about 15 feet further to the left, and actually had the existing sewer line would have gone through the addition, and part of the stipulation of the variance was that the existing sewer line would be relocated around the right-hand side by the driveway to tie into the sewer. Upon application for his building permit, Mr. Musto slid the addition over slightly, and I believe it was within a couple of feet of the sewer line, which was not acceptable to the DPW, nor would it be. Typically, there's a 20-foot sewer easement, so there's nothing that's allowed within 20 feet, 10 feet either side of the sewer line. Additionally, the movement of that structure now changes and actually eliminates the second means of egress for the existing house, which, to me, changes what the board would consider. It certainly changes the approved plan of record, and I think it bears considerable reconsideration by the board. There's been no modification or no explanation as to how during construction, the applicant is going to maintain a required second means of egress for the the applicant is going to maintain a required second means of egress for the existing house. And it's not only to be for a day or two, there's, there's going to be an extended period of time that the second means of egress or the existing home is, is going to be inaccessible and unsafe, because it's going to be part of the excavation and foundation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Okay, I'll open this up for questioning for the board. Matt?
Not right away, Mr. Chairman.
Rachel?
I mean, I reiterate all of my concerns about the qualifications for a variance from our prior appearances, but we have a variance right now, so I have some questions about it. One of the conditions was, I think, like fencing or something with your neighbor. Have you satisfied that condition?
Yes, that's been done.
Okay, and then I'm, my recollection is that you had, we had asked about putting the addition kind of in the T intersection where that former addition had been raised previously, and my recollection was you couldn't build at, from that portion of the property because of a concern of ledge. This seems to be in that portion of the house now, so I'm wondering how that interacts with your prior determination about ledge.
Well, there might be, there might very well be ledge there. I mean, when I did the project behind this house, there was ledge on site. So, I'm just taking the position that there's most likely going to be some ledge there, and if there's ledge, and if it's minor, there are means, methods of dealing with it. Hydraulic hammer is one, to fracture the ledge, to, to, to make, make it clear to allow for a foundation, and that, that's, that's probably the easiest method to go about dealing with ledge.
Mm-hmm. I guess my, my takeaway from the prior meeting, when we had asked about that, was the existence of the ledge was prohibitive, so I'm a little confused as to why it's no longer prohibitive based on this relocation of the plan that will be over the area where you believe that there is ledge.
I think it would only be prohibitive if, if you had it blast. You know, you have a, you have a 200-year-old house. Blasting is probably not the best alternative, but it's the quickest alternative, and I'm sure if we blasted, it would probably have some impact on the existing structure. That was my concern.
Mm-hmm. And, and then on prior plans from one of the first iterations of your appearance, at least before me sitting on the board, and perhaps also one of the earlier variances you got for a similar project, did contemplate that sewer line, and I believe we've kind of talked about how it had changed.
Yes.
And in one of the hearings, we had, as a board, had upheld the determination of the building commissioner that substantial work had not commenced with respect to the variance, rendering a prior variance expired, after which, at a future public hearing, this board granted a variance. But my recollection is the evidence that you had presented to support the position that substantial work had been done really centered around your work for the sewer, and the location of the sewer, and how to treat the sewer. So, I'm also surprised that we're being asked for a modification specifically related to the sewer. Has something changed about the location of the sewer that would bring you before this board?
Yes, yes. Originally, the, the building, the addition, which, not to the chairman's liking, asked if we could move the building back behind, sequence the building with, with the structure of the existing building. But prior to that, the building would have been, would have looked like a run-on sentence. And part of that problem was, there's a sewer line that goes currently from the project behind my property to a sewer manhole that's in front of my property. And part of that problem is that the proposed structure would have existed atop of the existing sewer line, and one of our concerns is, let's try to, let's get the sewer moved. And that, we were in the process of doing that. We actually, we got the permission to move the sewer, but we had to wait for a sewer permit, and that's why we had not started the excavation on the existing or the proposed addition. So, I know Mr. Pelletier said we didn't commence work under the building permit, and he, and he's, technically, he's correct. We hadn't started any of the work authorized by the building permit, but we had a building permit. We had filed it with, as a condition of our, our variance. I think we met all the conditions of the variance. We got the extensions as required, as a condition of the variance. It was his position, we hadn't commenced work under the permit, therefore, we, we vacated the permit. That's not true. We were in the process of doing our housekeeping to make provisions to move the sewer. But however, now that, that's gone, we reapplied. This board was very generous. They gave us the bill, they gave us the variance. Mr. Shannon wanted the, the building placed behind the existing building. I think I might have brought it up at the meeting, and unfortunately with that, the building in relationship to the sewer was a little bit closer than the sewer commission would have liked it.
I guess, looking at the location of the existing sewer, which hasn't changed, the, the structure as initially presented, with the, my concern about interfering with the brick face on the side, which was the basis of having it be a unique structure, would have shifted the, the addition closer to the sewer line, and the modification that brought it behind the building actually brought it further from the sewer line. So, I'm, I'm, I'm confused about why this is before the board now, because the sewer line hasn't.
One of the conditions required is that the, the two buildings share 12 feet of common wall, and I think we had that. The unfortunate part of that was, satisfying that condition put the edge of the building within five feet of the sewer line. Again, Mr. Pelletier's concerned during his comments section of the, the, the application review, was that I should speak with Jay Frucci of the sewer department, which I did. He asked me if we could move the building 10 feet from the sewer, which we did. And it's his position that that constitutes a minor modification, which has to be addressed by this board.
I, I don't know if Alex could maybe pull it up. The, the prior plan before it was shifted behind the house with the minimum of 12 feet?
Yep.
Because just in my brain, it just makes me think that it, the plan that was approved moved it farther from the sewer line.
You're right. So, it was originally proposed over the sewer line. Then it was proposed five feet away with a note on the plan that said sewer line to be moved.
Can you go to the 2019 plan? I'm sorry to interject.
No, this is helpful. It's good to see.
In 2019, you knew you had to move that sewer line, and you were working on that in 2019.
Yes, correct.
On the driveway, because you had, the original plan, you had the building there, and I had asked you to move it to the back, and you knew from 2019, your own certified engineer drew the plan.
Sure.
That created it, and that is what we voted on, and that is what I am going to hold you to.
Can I, can I see that plan?
Surely, can.
Sure.
She's going to put it up here. It's your plan, it's your engineer.
I'll be able to see it.
And that's from 2019. That was the original plan. In 2000, when you came before us first, that's where your people were working.
That's correct.
So, you knew that had to be moved.
If I, if I may?
Yes, sure, you may.
That building, the, the gable end of that, of those two buildings made with each other, okay? If you remember during our process, I suggested, because you weren't happy with altering the, the brick end of the building, and I came up with the solution. I said, "What if we put the building behind the existing building?" And that's what we did. You did not want to see the brick, brick ends altered, if possible. We achieved that by taking the proposed building and putting it behind the building, maintaining 12 feet of common wall space. But in, in doing that, we had to move the building laterally, so there was more common wall space. I think we went from 12 feet of common wall space to maybe 15 or 16 feet of common wall space. By doing that, it, it alleviated the need to move the sewer line. By taking the building, instead of having it here, moving it back, as we discussed, so that it made contact, the front, front wall of the proposed building was in contact with the rear wall of the existing building, and we slid it back, that, that alleviated the need to move the sewer line.
In our, in our decision, then, the sewer line came up, and I did watch them, went back and watched, thank you, NCM, and that came up, and I understood it, that you were going to continue moving the line where you were working, when you testified first, that's where you were working, and that's the point that Rachel brought up, that with Mr. Pelletier, you said you were working to relocate the sewer line. And so, this is what we approved, to have that sewer line moved down to the driveway and underneath, and not underneath the building, because the building was still, was very close to that sewer line, even when we asked you to move that, because that building was still, it might even have still been over it, but we, I don't see that in me.
I think the biggest thing, Mr. Chairman, was you didn't want to see the end of the building disturbed, on, on the existing building. I think it was built at, back in 1812. We achieved that by taking the whole building, the proposed addition, sliding it behind the existing building and laterally to the north.
There we go. Here's, yeah.
There it is, right there.
Yeah, and, and you would have to move the line, because it was still the line.
Right. There's a, there's a note about it that says, "The existing sewer line from the Pleasant Ridge condominium property cuts across the 241 Pleasant Street property, and the existing sewer line is in conflict with the proposed addition to the home at 241 Pleasant Street. The project is to relocate the existing sewer line on the property to avoid the conflict with the proposed addition. The proposed relocation will be performed within the property and tie into an existing SMH on the sidewalk adjacent to the driveway."
That's what we voted on.
We accomplished the conflict by sliding the building laterally to the north.
It's not what we voted on.
That's not what was approved by this board.
Okay, I'm sorry, Rachel, do you have anything else?
No, no other questions.
Hold on, hold on, sir. Shannon, do you have any?
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sorry if I misheard our building commissioner. Is there, is there now an issue about relocating the sewer line in the way that was proposed in the version of this that was approved?
The, the, the problem we're having now is that the building, as shown on this plan, overlays the sewer line, burdens the sewer line to the tune of about two feet.
Right.
And that's, you can't have that. So, the thought was, if we move the building more laterally to the right, the proposed building to the right, we could eliminate the conflict with the sewer line. It doesn't make sense to spend $70,000 to move a sewer line for the sake of sliding the building, a proposed building, two or three feet, four feet, five feet to the right. I, I didn't think.
But that is something that could be, it is technically feasible to meet the requirements of what was approved.
Oh, sure. Oh, yes, absolutely. I mean, we didn't have to go the route that the plan showed for purposes of relocating the sewer line. We could have gone southerly with the sewer line and run it along the abutting property line between myself and Mrs. Court of Partridge, my immediate abutter to the left. I mean, I thought, by just, by moving the building further away from the sewer line, we've achieved the same goal.
Alex, can you pull that up so we can see who the engineer is on that?
Yeah, I think it's Chris Kirby.
Is this your engineer? Chris Kirby?
Yes.
This is what you filled in your application, not us. You presented this to us, and you agreed to relocate the sewer line. We're not relocating the building, at least, I'm not going to offer it.
Okay.
That's what was approved, and you can go ahead and do that.
We, well, then, we can, we, if you, if you like, we can remove, we can relocate the sewer line.
Okay.
But is it necessary? If we can achieve the same results, not, not burden the sewer.
You're not achieving the same result, because the building commissioner just spoke. He's concerned about access, and he's concerned about fire safety. There's several things in his email that he's concerned about.
Oh, it looks like Gary has his hand raised.
Okay, Gary, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just, again, I, I wanted to reiterate the fact that, that the, the plan that was approved would clearly discuss relocating the sewer line, because the, the line was actually going through the building. Mr. Musto tried to, you know, his, his interim plan was to slide, slide it over so that the sewer line was about two feet from the proposed addition, and he also wanted to tie into that sewer line behind the addition, which, which, number one, it's too close to the addition by moving it a couple of feet, and also wouldn't allow for a proper cleanout and pitch from the waste line to the new, to, to the sewer line. So, that's, that's the actual reason why DPW said, "No, you need 10 feet." But by moving it 10 feet, you're now, like I said, you're eliminating the second, that little bump out on the back of the building that you see on the existing home is the second means of egress for the dwelling. It's required that every dwelling have two means of egress. There's only two in that building. That one is the second one. Now, you're going to, and, and his, his building plan has a replacement egress, but that doesn't satisfy it during construction. So, my question that I would recommend the board address with this applicant is, is the, is the existing house going to be occupied during construction?
Can you answer that question?
Well, we haven't caught that far yet, but...
Well, it's, it's kind of a big deal.
Well, what if we, what if we, what if we put the, what if we relocated the existing rear exit from the front building? And I think it's shown on the plan that I submitted to you. We, we put the proposed second means of egress from 241 over in this area. So, we would be maintaining the two means of egress for 241.
But you didn't propose that.
I think it's shown on the plan.
It's not shown on the plan.
All right, Gary, I'm, I'm good here. Okay, thank you. Is anyone here in the public that would like to speak to this matter? Anyone here in the public? Anyone here in GoToMeeting? Mr. Musto, you need four votes tonight. I am in favor of you doing what you said you were going to do in relocating the sewer line and not the house. Would you like to withdraw?
No, no. I, I can, I can still move the sewer line. That's not a problem. I just thought I was achieving the same results.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the applicant? Okay, I'll enter, if there's nothing else from the members, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Motion's are made by Shannon in second, and by?
Second.
Rachel. A man in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Rachel in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I had, does it matter if we had voted yes or no for the extension of the variance to be able, I assume this is a completely separate matter, and it does not matter how we had voted on the last one?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. He's checking.
Yeah. And in regards to what we, the 60 days, as we saw in our email from Gary, that it's been extended two years by the governor, so there's definitely plenty of time to proceed. Okay, so, there's a, there's a matter before us to ask for a modification. Is there a motion to accept or to deny?
A motion to deny the request of modification.
There's been a motion to deny, seconded by Shannon. On the motion to deny?
Yes.
On the motion to deny?
Yes.
Motion is denied, sir. Thank you.
So, we're going to end up moving the sewer, correct?
Yes, you have that permit to do that. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, all right, thank you. Okay, other business? Okay, other business, we received the annual report from 973. Are we going to put that on for a hearing for next month?
You can certainly continue it for discussion for next month. It's not a public hearing at this time.
Was that in our packet? I didn't see the.
Was it this?
Oh, it was this. Okay, I didn't, I didn't print it out. Can we continue that till May? So can I entertain a motion? To March, I'm sorry, March 4, 7:00 p.m., the Senior Center to review the, this is our annual report regarding 973 University Avenue.
GFS.
GFS, yeah, the report, yeah. A motion's been made to continue the discussion regarding the special permit for 973. Is there a second? Seconded by Al. Matt on the motion? Rachel on the motion?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay.
Yes.
On the motion, yes?
Yes.
And yes, so that's been, please put that on the docket for 973. And we have a draft calendar. If everyone had a chance to look at that, we can approve that if everyone's satisfied with that. It looks good to me. Al, does that look good to you?
Yeah, I have no, I can log in if I'm not.
Okay, okay. So you make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I made a motion to approve, seconded by Shannon. Matt on the motion to approve the calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
And Al, yes. Yes, and I vote yes. And is there a motion or discussion on the meeting minutes from October 22, 2024?
I'll just note, these had come to the board previously, Mr. Chair, and you had asked that the comments of town council be fleshed out.
Yes, yeah. And I saw that they were, yeah.
My only, my only point on that is the town council used the word narrow, which I did go back to NCM to make sure I wasn't misremembering, which I thought was a relevant clarification, if we could add that.
So if we can approve and add narrow in between, what?
It was the.
What paragraph?
One, two, three, four, fifth page.
Can you give that to?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seventh paragraph, narrow legal pathway.
Narrow, so in front of legal pathway.
Oh, okay.
Insert the word narrow.
Narrow legal pathway.
That is important.
Yeah, and that was, I confirmed NCM recording.
Yeah, that is. NCM is great, you can go back and look at those. I remembered, when you were going there, I just had enough. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of October 22, 2024?
I believe I had emailed over another comment regarding the Boston Highway, the enterprise application. I think there was a quote cited to Mr. Almeida that special permits only allow for 100 parking spaces, and I wasn't sure if that was accurate or not.
Yeah, that, yeah, I don't, yeah, that, I don't remember making that.
Yeah, I was, when I had read through it, I was, I didn't remember it from the meeting, and I would be surprised, yeah. So I just wanted to, I can also send it to you over email. Alex, I'll just pull out which paragraph it was actually, and my internet's not working right now, but that was just one thing that had stuck out to me.
So approve as amended from Rachel's amendment and from Shannon that she's going to send. Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, as amended, is there a motion?
So moved.
And seconded by Al. Al, on the motion, approve the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel? Yes, and the meeting minutes are approved. No further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Al. Al, to adjourn?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel and Matt. And we are adjourned. Thank you, NCM.